America and to the Republic, forged in stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Calero?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Benz?
Here. Let the record show nine present citizens comments.
We have no comment cards this evening, sir.
Thank you. Need a motion to suspend the rule? Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So we're gonna jump to the board docs because that's on scheduled time for doing that, so...
Yeah, I'd invite you all to go ahead down front. We'll have a telephone webinar and we'll hope that the technology works. All right, John?
Can you take anything down with us?
Okay, are you guys ready?
Yes, we are.
Oh, okay, great. Shall I go ahead and begin then?
That's fine.
Okay. Well, good evening everybody. It's not too late for our members. Our Emerald Day is here. We are the providers and actually developer of Board Docs. And I'll be pointing a brief overview of Board Docs this evening. I'd like to start off with just a couple of slides to give you a high level introduction to Board Docs. First off, what does Board Docs do? It gives districts a way to quickly manage any of the board related documents. Access to Board Docs is a device independent and platform independent. This just means you can use any type of device, whether you have an iPad or any other type of computer. You can just go to use your browser. So if you like Firefox or Chrome or Internet Explorer or Safari, go to your browser to access Board Docs directly. That's when you save your time and money, making a much more efficient process during interpreting your agenda. And giving schools help everybody find and use information is much more effective. Now, Board Docs is a cloud-based tool. And as such, your information is housed at our data location site. We are cloud and flexible housing working, essentially data location center. These are actually located in two different places. They're graphically separated, one on each coast, one in the middle of the country. Both locations run either local data, so that any time, either location could run the entire system or the entire country. And we keep the best of that for the back end of Board Docs, which most of us will never have to worry about. But, one of the things that will make you love Board Docs really is the support and training that we provide as part of the Board Docs infrastructure. Including customized onsite training and 24/7 US-based help runs for every customer. Now, information in Board Docs is delivered dynamically through screen when you look at it. So if I was a board member and I was coming in to prepare for a meeting, or if I was a member of the public and I was coming into a meeting, I would know 100% certainty that I would be having the most updated information at all times, because Republicans are the class. As a goal base system, Board Docs makes it very simple for administration. To share information as needed with public, but also be able to withhold sensitive information from them to specific information, as we did just for board members. All within a secure and trusted environment, the entire Board Docs infrastructure. And lastly, we're gonna make it so that it finds information later on. You know, it's great to have all this information available, but if you can't find anything because there's so many files, that can be very frustrating. Board Docs is dressed with that and makes it easy for everyone to find. So let's take a look. I'm going to actually switch over now to my browser. Now, I'm using Firefox. That's the browser I like to use when I use gunnery. So like I said, if you like to use Chrome or Internet Explorer, if you have an iPad and you like to use Safari, you'll access Board Docs as a member of public right from the web page for the district. Board members and administrative staff will use your username and password and actually log in to your Board Docs site. But here on the web page for the district, typically what you're going to see is a link somewhere on the page that might say "Add to the Minute." And then people would click on that and it would take them to your Board Docs site. So it kind of acts as an extension of your existing website. Now, once you've accessed the Board Docs site, you're going to see something that looks a little more like this. You'll notice we've got a picture over here on the right and a welcome message here. We've also got a logo and the name of the organization. These are just a couple of examples of the customization that the district clerk or tech can certainly manage along with anybody else who has these public access. All of these things are managed by the administration folks here in office. I think one of the greatest things about Board Docs for the public, the person that's building the agenda, is it makes them totally independent. They don't patronize on IT if you need it for them or to get documents or publish them. They're technically able to manage all of that simply within the Board Docs system. Now, information in Board Docs itself is presented in tabs, so you can see it up here across the top. And that can press it up into lots of features. When you come into Board Docs, we want to make it as easy as possible for you to find information that's most important today. So you're going to see that the meeting that's coming up is sitting right there waiting for you, whether you're a member of the public or staff or a board member. So that meeting is waiting right here. I could simply click on it and go look at the agenda. Now, when I do that, I get some different buttons over here on the right. And these are buttons that, different actions, I can give an association with the meetings that I've selected over here. Now, you may notice that on the left-hand side of the screen, I've got some different years. And if I wanted to navigate back to a particular meeting in a past year, I could certainly do that. But if you're like me, it is highly unlikely that I'm gonna remember what meeting and what past year something happened in. So right up here at the top, under active meetings, you have a search. Active meetings is like your archives. So let's say I'm gonna find a meeting where we talked about house and groups. And of course, you can search on any word or combination of words. Board Docs is looking for that. It doesn't matter if it's a name or a topic. Board Docs looks through all of your meetings and it looks into the supporting documents. Things about, you know, documents that can make up, whether it's both a paper packet or an electronic packet, Board Docs is looking through all of those documents and is going to come back to the list of the meetings where it found those documents or actual documents. So you can see here, I found two meetings, one in 2010 and one in 2011. And I can simply click on them. Every stakeholder has the ability to do that search, whether you're a member of the public or parent looking for particular pieces of information that needs to be publicly shared across, or whether you're a board member. Now, many times when coming in to look at the meeting coming up, let's go ahead and do that. We select it or upcoming meetings, which is waiting right here for quick and easy access. And I'm going to click "View Agenda." Now, when Board Docs presents the agenda to someone looking at it, it places the agenda itself, basically the order business, over here on the left-hand side. These dark gray entries will come as categories. You guys will manage your things the way you plan things. You certainly do not have to manage your meetings the way I've managed my agenda previously. And then within each category, it has the agenda items itself. So for instance, when I click on this agenda item, "Buying Reports," on the left-hand side, everything for that agenda item is displayed on the right. It's kind of like every agenda item is locked. And in that box is all of the documents that need to be with that particular item. So we have an "Intender" area that gives us the basic information, the title, what type of item it is. And then you've got the "Content" area. Public content is what's shared with the public. So this is where I'm going to place all of the content and information records that we want shared. Now, you'll notice here I've got several different documents. So when I click on a particular document, it opens up for me. And I can read it, I can either open it online, I can come back, maybe I want to open another document that was part of that report. When we come on site, we train with, by the way, we point it in your Board Docs infrastructure. We're going to train the administrative staff and then we also train boards. And we will actually build a meeting review and then the board members from their training will kind of walk through between meeting and Board Docs. So I'll talk briefly about the public area. But Board Docs also gives the administration two additional areas where we can place confidential information, persons and students identifiable information. Might be placed in this area, except for terminals, so that only our board members and superintendents can see that particular information that has to do with the agenda items. This allows the administration to not have to build that reverse of the meeting. We're relating the stream line, simplified process of creating agendas. We have built sharing to our social networking, Twitter, Facebook and all those emails, which are options that can either turn on or turn off. Those are great ways to, you know, get information out to the public domain and drive to the back to your absolute information in your Board Docs site. Now, when I want to look at another agenda item, I simply click on it and it takes me right to that item. And again, everything for that agenda item is displayed right in that item. Now, one of the things I noticed about your agenda is that you do have video. And Board Docs allows the district to associate video with your meeting. In fact, you can index your YouTube video right to your agenda item. So when you're looking at the agenda item here, if there's a little TV right up here in the top part of the agenda item, you'll know that the video for that particular item is available. That's something that's happened, of course, at the meeting, at the process of indexing video and sharing system. So it's something that's become a reverse training. We'll actually show the administration how to do that during the training process. Now, of course, we can search in one agenda if we want to do. So right here in this particular agenda, if I'm gonna do a search on the word technology, it'll take me right to the items where it found that word. So searching is really simple. Now, the other search that I want to show you has to do with the search tab, which is all the way here on the end. Searching from the search tab is a little bit different in that it actually takes you to a particular file or an other object where it's found the word that you want. So my example I'm getting you to see is the word "horse," like a horse truck. You want to find where we talked about buying a horse truck. So you'll notice here, when I do a search from the search tab, it takes you right to particular documents. I don't even have to look around the screen if I don't want to. And you can see here, oh, okay, there is where we purchased the horse truck and paid $14,000 for it. That must have been a long time ago with all of this. So that search ability is available for everyone. Now, the other search is a special tool that's available for staff and board, just for administration. It's right here and it's called "Medicure." Medicure will allow our staff and board members to search the publicly shared agenda information and policies of all Board Docs customers may want. Now, what's real nice, especially in Pennsylvania, is there are 94 school districts that have used Board Docs currently in Pennsylvania. So not only do you get a great national snapshot of information, you're gonna be able to see a wonderful interactive. So as a example, I'm gonna do a search on electronic cigarette policy. And then I'm also gonna put PH at the end. And I'm going to perform a medicure. And Board Docs searches through the agenda items and policies of all Board Docs customers that are public governing bodies. So the first thing I see here is "Policy from Halifax Area School District." This is there to that end of the policy. I'm seeing there "Hospital Policy." Here's one from Leachburg, Area School District. Here's therapy. So I'm seeing these real life, up-to-date policies of these different districts. Or another rich source of information for purchasing. Maybe one of them is to purchase Chromebooks. So I'm gonna do a medicure on purchased Chromebooks. And Board Docs is looking through again the agenda items and policies. And you'll notice here is a agenda item from a school district in Mississippi where they were purchasing really a bunch of different Chromebooks. This is one they shared publicly. Again, this is a special tool, medicure, if you need to Board Docs, and it's available for our staff and board members. Now, as the district is using the policy through the PMSBA, this policy tab right here in your Board Docs doc sheet will eventually link to your policy system that you're getting from PMSBA. So that policy tab will link right there. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and pause and ask you if you have any questions for me about Board Docs doc sheet.
Any questions tomorrow? We're not seeing questions Laura, so maybe we'll see.
Great. So no questions? If you guys think of anything, please just let Jeff know and he'll certainly pass it on to me. And with that, I would like you to actually end off this rest of your meeting. Thanks so much for your time to speak.
Thank you Laura.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye. About that too.
Mr. Warren Allen?
I'm going to...
Ms. Erb?
Erb.
What can he do now?
That's my...
I'm in trouble. That's just Erb's way.
Well, Dr. Moore, sitting down, I'll just give a quick introduction of, when we were out at the leadership conference, Board Docs was out there and had a couple of the sessions that they did. And then we've talked about this over the last probably two years or more off and on. And we just thought, since it didn't cost anything to have a demonstration in this presentation, we just thought we'd schedule it and just to get the conversation moving and more information to the board members, so...
We will have additional information for you next week. It was supposed to have arrived today, but it didn't. In terms of pricing, there are two options. One was a subscription. I want to say it was about $3,000 a year. I'm not sure, it might be a little less than that. And that was the version that I believe you saw today. It's called the LT Lite version. Then there's an enhanced version that's about $9,000 a year. So I will have that information for you side by side. And we can talk it out a little bit more. We certainly don't want to rush into anything and make any snap decisions as to whether or not we want to go this route or not. I see some advantages to it, I see some disadvantages to it as well.
Is there any discussion or can I call?
Jack or Mike, either one of you? Any of the local school districts on Board Docs that you know of?
Leachburg, I saw there. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit uses Board Docs. Those are the two that I am familiar with. There may be some others. I'll find out. Plum, Plum Borough.
Are you happy with it? Are you in?
We were just introduced to it about two months ago and we didn't even get training. And it was very easy to use. The most difficult part was to understand that everything was gonna be on the left side now, instead of on the right side. But it's real easy to use and, you know, you just have to, you know, click over and...
They were using an electronic agenda prior to this, were they not?
Yeah.
That board book, I believe.
I can't remember what it was called, but...
So one of the things I noticed, I can bring out more of this when I do my report next week from the conference, but like one of the examples she gave was, you know, when our policies, you know, PSBA is doing our policies now for free. It's not even part of this Board Docs discussion. It's gonna be part on our website. Our policies will be on our website through Board Docs, because they have a deal with PSBA. But anyway, so say there's three or four of us meeting and discussing policy 707, use of facilities. And, you know, we're not sure like what our policy is or what other policies are. Like she showed you, you can do that search thing and pull up other policies. Or, you know, we're discussing something in a subcommittee and like, you know, what did we discuss last year about this? And you can just type in the search thing and that's a nice thing. And like I said, there's other examples I can bring up in my report next week from the conference. But does anyone else have any input questions that Jack can ask before next week? Or if you do have other questions, get them to myself or Jack and we can find out before next week so everybody can get the answer. What are the disadvantages, Dr. Moore?
Well, the main disadvantage, two disadvantages I see would be upfront cost for the board members who don't have their own technology. We'd be providing either an iPad or a Chromebook or something that, you know, that would be a couple hundred dollar investment for anyone who's not bringing their own laptop with them. The other disadvantage is, you know, I have somewhat of a comfort level with technology. Mr. Pushkar has a much greater technology, you know, comfort level. Some people don't have a comfort level at all, you know. So, you know, that's something that you folks have to decide. What are you comfortable with? Are you comfortable with pencil and paper? Or are you comfortable, you know, having that in front of you electronically and doing the electronic version? The more expensive version, I believe, also allows you to vote electronically. So rather than having a roll call, we would have a screen and a projector here and you would punch yes, no, abstain, whatever the case may be. And that would be displayed as well. But the disadvantage I see would be, you know, the upfront cost and the comfort level. Advantage, obviously, we're gonna save a lot of paper, we're gonna save a lot of gasoline, we're gonna save a lot of manpower because, you know, people are delivering board packets to you, you know, at least twice a month. So it would be a more efficient delivery system in that regard.
Would that electronic voting in some way eliminate some of the secretarial work that Peggy has to do as far as keeping minutes of the meeting? Obviously, the voting is gonna be electronically posted, so that's gonna be on the system. But I mean, about the meeting itself, would that be...
I believe that like, as the motions are there, and again, I'm not totally sure about this, but the motions are all listed, votes, and I think it automatically populates it. So, you know, obviously, the discussion wouldn't be recorded. But the part of the, you know, voting and minutes would be pre-populated, I believe, to be the case. And that would be with the enhanced version. I don't think that comes with the basic version.
The nice thing about that is I've noticed over the years, different times where, you know, you have a controversial vote and people love to be at the end because they can say, well, there's already five votes. So I can vote the way I want to look to get, you know, during the election year, you know, different things like that. Whereas if everybody votes at one time, you gotta vote what you think is the best, period, not what's gonna get you votes, even though you'd rather vote another way for whatever reason and stuff, so...
So it wouldn't actually be posted until all the votes were out, just like you do at a voting room?
That's what I understood at the one session I was at.
Interesting. Very interesting.
So it'd be something like the thing we saw where we do at our delegate assembly, but it would have the names of who voted what, is what I understood.
If you have additional questions, shoot me an email. I will forward that to our presenter, Laura Bantour, I believe her name is. We'll get those questions answered for you and we have a little bit more discussion next week and determine if this is something the board has an interest in. And, you know, if you have an interest in going with this method, it might be a good idea to call a couple other vendors, see what their pricing structure looks like as well and what they can do for us, you know, and obviously get the biggest bang for our buck if you decide you want to go that way.
Any more questions or comments or... Seeing none. When you take a look to the back to...
Yeah.
Minutes?
Next week you'll be asked to approve the minutes from the October 1st and 8th, 2015 meetings.
Questions? Hearing none. Workers' compensation?
Yeah, you'll all, you'll be asked to approve the financial reports as well. In your packet, there was a paper with a workman's compensation panel. Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about how that was arrived at and why we're making some changes with our workers' compound?
Yes, we switched this year to UPMC because they outbid Highmark. In the process of making the transition, we needed to pull over from the past physicians that were not on UPMC's list. UPMC gave us a starter list to use, but it did not include many of the providers that we had in the past. So in working with the UPMC, and we gave them the list of physicians that we wanted on the list, that were on our list in the past, they vetted them and came back to us and approved this current list for the district to use. The starter list they gave us was providers that were really out of reach for our employment pool, mainly up in the Greensburg area, which is not convenient for us at all.
So next week we'll ask you to approve the physicians' panel for our workers' comp carrier. Any questions for Jim on that topic?
While we're on the topic of finance, Jim, you want to talk a little bit about the budget impasse and where we are in our process?
We are on day 128 without a complete state budget. And this breaks the October 2009, which went 101 days. And so this is the longest budget impasse the state has had since 1971, when the governor was Governor Shaffer. since 1971, when the governor was Governor Schaefer. That was signed after 248 days. Now, in the fall of 2003, the only line item that was held up was the big subsidy, what we know today as the basic education funding. In the old days, we knew it as equalized subsidy for basic education. That one line item was held up, and it was not approved until December 23rd of 2003. That one was 176 days. But this is a complete budget impasse, a different situation, so this, well, that's what we have to deal with. Now, I am near completing my packet to seek either a line of credit or a tax revenue anticipation note. And some of the bankers I've talked to have said that they're really wanting the same item. What I have to do now is with Mr. Matonic is research some of the legalities that have to be ironed out. For example, does this have to be a published, public bid, so to speak, or is this just really, you know, send out proposals to some of our local banks and try to establish a line? We need to talk to our bond counselor, Cliff Pastel, about that. And the final item there would be to decide, based on the calculations, how much the proposed borrowing could be. And I anticipate that probably going to be limited by how much the banks are willing to loan out. They're probably not going to have an appetite to loan out many millions of dollars. It might be for a couple months of operating funds. The final question would be is what's the appetite of the school board? Do you want to borrow money to keep schools open? Or, because right now, we have the cash flow that will tide us through the end of December. And sometime during January, probably mid to late January is where we would then need to tap into a line of credit or have a borrowing in place, so.
We don't have access. I mean, we do have access, obviously. We wouldn't have access using the general fund. We can't use it out of there. I mean...
Oh, we're using it.
I'm saying, but you're saying that'll be gone then?
Yes.
So it'll be gone by then, okay.
It'll all be gone by then.
It'll all be gone, okay.
So we'll be back with those details for you as time moves on, perhaps next week.
It's quite possible. I'll have some bank proposals for our meeting on the 7th. And we'll know for sure how much they would be willing to set aside for us, either give us a fixed loan or a line of credit. I'd probably prefer a line of credit myself. Hopefully, they would only charge us for the amount that we actually used, but we'll see how that plays out.
Meanwhile, we'll keep our fingers crossed for a budget so that we don't have to make these kinds of decisions. I wanted to give you an update on the progress there. And again, the board does have a choice, you know. The choices are, you know, borrow money or curtail the program. So those are the two choices that we may be faced with. I think by the time we get to the point where we will be needing to borrow, there will be some precedent set in other districts by then in terms of what other districts are doing. And I would suspect that if districts stop having school, there will be significant pressure on the legislature to get something done, the legislature and the governor. So we'll see what happens.
You know what? The other districts in the IU, are they going to have to start borrowing this month or next month?
Some will have to start borrowing. I believe maybe one already has. Many of the districts are in about the same situation we are with enough to get through the holidays and into January.
Jack, if we decided not to borrow and decided to close down or curtail, would we have to curtail everything, or could we do segments of it? For example, again, let's suppose that you were going to decide to curtail, and you said, but I want to keep the high school open because I want the seniors to graduate in time. Are we able to do that type of thing, or we have to do it all or nothing?
I don't know the answer to that, Bob. That's something we'd have to research. That's an excellent question.
Any other questions or comments right now?
We will certainly find that out. Thank you.
Seeing none. We'll get a discussion. Fall sports update?
I had asked Mr. Swink if he could give a little recap of our fall sports program, how we did overall, a couple of high points that you might want to talk about.
Yeah, thanks again for the opportunity. I just wanted to go over now that the fall sports have ended, there's some several highlights. I'd like to mention some athletes that did some nice things, and I thought it would be a nice point to bring out. First of all, our volleyball team this year, they did have an opportunity to play at our Fayette County Coaches Tournament in, I think it was in August or September. There was 14 teams from the tri-state area. The girls went down there, and they ended up placing second out of the 14. So they did a very nice job. The girls worked very hard. Section they were in this year was a very, very tough section, but they never quit, and they worked hard towards it. Boys and girls soccer, the boys ended up sections 10 and 6, and the girls were 9 and 8 and 1. Both teams missed the playoffs by one's games. The section this year was extremely tight. For instance, the boys, one high point of the season was the boys and girls both beat Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant had come in for the girls undefeated, and the girls beat them here. The boys, the same sense that Mount Pleasant came in being first in the section. Had they beat our boys, they would have been section champ. Our boys beat them, knocked them down to third. Had we had that one game back and beat Mount Pleasant like we did, we would have been section champs. So that's how tight the section was, very close. So overall, they did well, worked hard, and just missed it by the one game. Golf, this year, the boys and girls had excellent seasons as well. The boys had probably a record year for them. They went down to the Fayette County Tournament again in the beginning of August, took first in double A. They took third overall, including all the quad A schools and bigger schools, so they had an excellent start. They ended up being the section champs this year. That's the first time since 1986 that we had a section champ in golf. And not only did we have the team as a section champ, Josh Redding was an individual section champ, and he was also voted by the other teams in the section as MVP of the section. So very nice honor for Josh, and overall, their record was 14 and 1 this year. So most of those kids are coming back. They should be very good again this year. The girls were 6 and 6, missed the playoffs, but again, they had a very good section as well, and were right in the thick of things. Cross country, the cross country team had several athletes who did very well this year. Ben Bickerton, if you all know Ben, he broke the school record that was held by Chris Dugan for many, many years. Chris Dugan was probably one of the legendary runners here, went on to college and had great success. Ben did break that record this year on our home course. He placed second at the county meet, and he was second in the WPIL last week. So Ben had a great showing. He is going to the States this year. This is his third time there. He's going to be joined by teammates Riley Beistel, Veda, and Kaylee Farino. Kaylee, this is her second trip there. And Riley, this is her fourth trip to the States, as many times as she's been in school. That's the only athlete in South Moreland history that ever made it four times in a row. So it's a great honor, a great accomplishment for her. Talking to Donnie Gilpin and some of the athletes that you've had here that ran cross country, she's the only one, boy or girl, that made it four times in a row. So that's a great, great accomplishment for her. And again, that's what I said, I just wanted to take a minute to recognize their accomplishments. I think it's a great job. I want to wish them good luck this weekend. They are going to States. They're leaving tomorrow. They'll compete there on Saturday morning. I'd like to thank the parents, coaches, administrators, and the community for the support. And I'd really like to thank the student and athletes because they represented the school and the community with pride and sportsmanship. Any questions?
Charlie, thank you very much. It's always nice to get that kind of an update. The next item on the agenda, we received a certificate from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, certificate of appreciation to school director Mike Benz in honor of 12 years of service. He's now on the honor roll of school board service. And Michael, congratulations.
Thank you. Old business, seeing none. New business, PSBA's principle for governance and leadership?
Right. I sent this out in your packets. Every couple of years, PSBA revises their principles for governance and leadership, and they have updated that again. They're asking board members to advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically. And there's some details enumerated there. So we will ask you to consider adopting those principles for governance and leadership as sponsored by the PSBA as a model for how we would continue to do business here at South Moreland.
Any questions, comments on that? If we want that on the agenda to...
Make it official?
Yes. Sounds good. We'll have that on the agenda. Westmoreland County Forum for Workforce Development?
The 17 school districts have partnered with the Industrial Development Board, Chamber of Commerce, and a number of other community college, Penn State, Fayette, a number of higher education institutions to develop a forum for workforce development. And the general idea behind that is we're looking at ways to prepare students to go into jobs here in Westmoreland County so the business can stay here in Westmoreland County and/or young people can stay here in Westmoreland County. One of the things we're looking at is college and career pathways. Students, you know, who wish to pursue a career in technical education pathway, there will be certain recommendations in terms of the kind of coursework they will have. Students who may choose one of the medical professions would have a pathway. These are all being developed by the forum. And there's a more or less a mission statement that they have asked every school board in the county to adopt. I gave you a copy of that. So we would ask you to consider adopting that at your next meeting as well. Yesterday, I was at a meeting in the morning and part of the afternoon. There were about 40 people sitting around the table from school districts, industry, you know, various county agencies, and so on and so forth, trying to get this initiative off the ground here in the county.
Any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Coleman, I'm very happy to see that something like this is going to be taking place. I think it's, not everybody has to go to college for four years to get a career. And I think it's good because, like you said, Jack, that, you know, it builds the workforce here. We want to keep our kids here and promote the area. So I think it's a great thing, and I'm very happy to see this go forward.
One of the things that they talked about, we have our BOTS IQ that Mr. Pollard actually works with with our high school kids. There's a program now out for middle school kids, and it's called the Fluid Power Challenge, and it deals with hydraulics and pneumatics in the seventh and eighth graders. So Mr. Mashley and I discussed that yesterday. Maybe taking a look at that competition this year and seeing what it's all about, maybe getting our kids, you know, through our new STEM programs involved in that programming for forthcoming years. See what that's all about, get our kids exposed to that kind of information. So a lot of good things coming out of that forum.
Any other questions or comments?
Marching band trip?
Yeah, May 14th and 15th, that would be a Saturday and a Sunday. The marching band would like to visit Sandusky, Ohio, and Cleveland, Ohio, the amusement park there in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and a few other stops. The itinerary was included in your packet, so we'd ask you to consider that as well next week.
Questions? Seeing none. Wrestling tournament?
Yeah, each year, our wrestlers are invited to participate in a meet in Normandy, Ohio. That would be December 11 and 12, and we would ask you to consider approving that overnight trip as well.
Questions? Updated organizational chart?
Right. And before I go into this, one of the reasons we updated is, you know, we don't have an assistant superintendent anymore, but we do have a psychologist and director of pupil services, and I'd like to introduce her to you. Dr. Stacy Snyder is here. Stacy, could you stand up there? And we can all get a... There you go. So Stacy, welcome aboard. So basically, what I did here, what I changed, I took the assistant superintendent position out. Mr. Clara's position, which was pupil services and special education, I updated his job responsibilities to the things that he's now handling in addition to his principals responsibilities. He's working with federal programs, homelessness. He's also helping with our instructional technology integration in terms of, you know, getting on board with our technology refresh program. So his title was changed. And then we added school psychologist and director of pupil services, which is on the second column from the right, and the individuals and departments that would report to that position as well. So we would ask you to consider adopting the updated organizational chart next week as well, please.
Questions on that?
I would do S and T S principal since I'm under the high school one.
Yes.
Where does our vice principal fall into play there?
Right underneath the principal. Thank you for pointing that out. I will have that changed. It's on you, my apologies.
Maybe she preferred to be left off there.
I'll get that taken care of. Thanks for pointing that out.
Any more questions, comments?
Interestingly, this is the same chart we've had for quite some time, and no one ever picked up on that before. So good eyes.
Anything else before citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments? Seeing none, the motion to adjourn for executive session for personnel, brief report on tax litigation, Spirit STE portfolio, number 3735, 2008, Fayette County. Motion, please? Most by Mr. Beistel, second by Mrs. Rose. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes nine to zero.